I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, sorry for being a little bit late. Can I get a motion from the board to accept the agenda? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Dr. Harrison, your update, sir.
Good evening. Just as I'm getting myself organized here, but a few important things that I would like to report on this evening. As most in the community know, at least those of you with children, that Friday was our superintendent's conference day. And I have to say, it was a tremendous success. We had the great opportunity to not only engage our teachers, but our staff and our leaders in a variety of wonderful training experiences. Folks, primary consistent focus across the board of our work tied towards curriculum work and beginning to train our teachers in how to document our curriculum utilizing Rubicon Atlas curriculum mapping software. But we had, while each building staff participated in a couple hour session around that subject, we had a number of different sessions that took place in individual buildings. We had more DAS training for staff, we had character education programs, we had math curriculum work, we had work specific to our AIS programs, which is our support services. We worked on slow development and student assessments and so on. I have to say, it was a very, very productive, rewarding day. I can say from my seat, and I'm sure Dr. Kors, that we wish we had many more of them because all the effort that goes into each of those events has direct impacts on what happens in your children's classrooms each and every day. Last, at the last board meeting, I also reported on a subject related to Race to the Top. Race to the Top, as I indicated, is a federal education initiative that is really striving to try to enhance the quality of education for all students across the United States. And as a part of that grant, individuals states submitted their own grant applications. And New York State was one of the successful ones. And a part of those initiatives certainly trickle down to Irvington and other districts in our region. And in considering what that means to us, there's a variety of different services that are available to districts dependent on need. So if you have school districts that have fiscal need, if we have school districts where students are failing, there are services for those districts. If districts are in a position whereby they are not showing enough growth by measures of student achievement on the state test, they're identified as focused schools and they're essentially schools in need of improvement. And in those cases, SED steps in and provides variety of supports and accountability measures for those districts to make necessary gains on behalf of their students. Irvington is not one of those districts, of course. We are not in need of improvement, even though we desire to constantly improve the experiences we provide for our children. In fact, three of our four schools are identified as reward schools in the state of New York. So we have very few resources that come to us. We received a nice certificate acknowledging that acknowledge, that recognition which is hung in three of our schools now. We, but major impacts for us are looking at the implementation of Common Core, which is tied to that, and also certainly the new APPR, which we are actively engaged in in our district. Those measures, though, however, expand well beyond Race to the Top. Those are written into law, written into regulation, and are expectations that we have to abide by. But one item that we discussed last week was a parent portal, which was a data portal that mimics much of what we currently have in E-School Plus. That instrument is being provided free of charge to schools across the state for the next two years. And come year three, there is no longer funding and SED cannot verify that they will be able to support that moving forward. There is certainly a number of districts that are eager to try to avoid what that financial consequence could be. And as I've reported in, I think, two previous board meetings, this anticipated costs in those areas should be $35,000 to $50,000 per school year. And considering the fact that we receive approximately $2,900 in Race to the Top funds, it certainly seems like a majorly unfunded mandate. Last week, I had a conversation with the Associate Commissioner, Ken Wagner. Ken informed me, as well as a number of other superintendents, that we can withdraw from Race to the Top at this point, understanding we still have to be held to all the other standards. And we understand that, we acknowledge that, and we are not trying to think we're going to back away from curricular changes. We're not going to move away from APPR. We understand those are our obligations. But if we essentially say no thank you to $2,900, we can continue to provide our existing portal to our parent community. And in doing so, we can avoid that expenditure somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $50,000. There are a number of other districts that are engaged in this process. I can say Quad Villages, Valhalla, a number of others in our part of the state and our part of the county are taking this step forward. So it would be my recommendation to the board that we would consider doing this. That not only did Mr. Wagner tell me that it was feasible, but he actually gave me the directions in how to withdraw from this. It's a simple letter that needs to be copied to SED and to the federal Ed Department. And in doing so, he was, he said, since our amount of money that we actually receive is so small, he thinks from just a pure accounting standpoint that they're not, SED is not even going to bother to go after it.
On this, I don't want to jump into your, but on this point, just to give the board some time to sort of mull it and come up with any questions we might have as to how it otherwise impacts. Do we have this as an agenda item at the next meeting so that we can properly vet it?
We can do that?
I mean, if you're looking for the boards, but I think, I think we need to do that.
So if there's any, certainly any questions, let me know.
Is it possible for us to go on and see the parent portal? I'd just be curious to look at it.
Yeah, absolutely. I can provide links to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that said, I want to make an announcement with respect to the sidewalk. Last week, or two weeks ago, the Board of Education approved, awarded a contract for some sidewalk replacements to replace areas where there's currently bluestone around the campus. We would just want to announce that that work will begin tomorrow. The work will be occurring after school hours, and Mr. Knowles will be working very, very closely with the contractors to ensure that the construction areas are safe to prevent any possible injury or accident. And then finally, now that we have the open houses behind us in each of our schools, it kind of signals that we're well into the school year. And with that said, I encourage everyone to stay well connected with the school calendars and your children's schools because there's many great events on the horizon. We can look to family math nights. We know the high school musical is only a few weeks away. Dr. Korn, the principals are going to be providing some parent workshops in the not-too-distant future. And of course, continue to support our athletic teams and marching bands, who is having a great season this fall. Thank you, Mr. Grados.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I guess the next thing on the agenda is a board discussion on the draft policies on non-school-sponsored student expression and school-sponsored student expression. I guess I'll, I'll kick us off, if that's okay. You know, folks, sometimes we need to remember that we're a volunteer board. All of us have full-time jobs, even if it's carting around multiple children during the day. And, you know, we don't always roll things out the best way that we could because we don't spend our days considering these things. We just, you know, personally, I don't have the time. I could vouch for the other board members as well. We all, we have other things we have to do. Regarding these policies, though, I think it's important that, you know, the board has, and all board members have, a fiduciary duty to the district. And I think that the community would want us to consider policies put before the board, even if a segment of the community, or even if the community at large, doesn't feel that it's a proper policy. We should nevertheless consider it to figure out what's in the best interest of the district. There's been, now, I guess this is the third public meeting that we've discussed this. I know that I've received, fourth? I guess that's right, the fourth. I've received much direct communication from people in the community, both pro and con, for these policies. But in light of that, what I'd like to suggest to the board, one of the things that we have not discussed yet, we've discussed First Amendment issues, which people, reasonable people will differ on. We've discussed direction of the district, but we have not discussed whether we should, in fact, pursue these policies as a board or whether we should not pursue the policies. I'm happy to kick that off right now. I believe we're adequately covered by our code of conduct, and I do not feel that we should pursue these policies any further. That's my speech.
Are you taking a poll if we all agree?
I'm, I'm starting the, it's a conversation among, I'm just starting it off. I think that if we're not, obviously, if we're not going to pursue the policies, discussing the policies becomes moot. You know, I personally feel that we should not pursue the policies at this time.
Okay, I would agree with that. I would also like, I think this whole process has highlighted one concern I have.
Only one?
As to the role of the policy committee and taking up new policies. It's my understanding, we haven't had a new policy since about 2006 that was not directed, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
That was not because of laws changing or mandated by laws, like the Dignity Act and those kinds of policies that are new since 2006. But I believe the cell phone policy was the last policy that was not driven by any kind of legal issues. So I think, I don't know if it's time now, or we should set aside at a different board meeting, what is the role of the policy committee specifically in terms of vetting new policies or not? Is that a conversation to have as a board? As to, your point, should we entertain, you know, a new policy when it comes up? Should that decision be made first before it's taken to the policy committee?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we, we need to. I know that in prior boards, it was more of a, sort of a litmus test, I guess, as to whether, is that the way of putting it? I've been on the, you know, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but I've been on the policy committee, I guess, three of the last four years. And we've never seen it as a litmus test. I mean, I personally, when we discuss it, I wouldn't think that two board members sitting on a committee should be able to kibosh a policy from consideration of the board and from public discussion. I, I just don't, I mean, that's my personal opinion.
We don't have, we, we hang on this discussion now if you want.
Yeah, certainly stay focused on it.
Sure.
It does just raise the question of what, what, if anything, should we have a policy committee? If all that's going to happen is the administration is going to propose policies, why do we need a policy committee at all? Why doesn't the administration? I mean, the policy committee, if it exists, needs to do something.
Well, the policy committee does, well, the policy committee does, in fact, do something. I mean, the policy, the policy committee meets, it talks about, it talks about, of course, it talks about the policies. It vets the policies, gets an understanding of why the policy is there. A lot of it is reading, sometimes the things aren't drafted. I've always seen it as getting the policies in a condition ready to present to the board. That, that's the most succinct way I could put it.
I mean, my, I, I agree. I mean, even like Buildings and Grounds, I think a lot of the things that come up, they handle in Buildings and Grounds. And I, for one, am very comfortable with that. I think when it gets to the bigger level, then it gets brought to the board. But with the, with the understanding that usually, if it's brought to the board, then these guys are comfortable with it at Buildings and Grounds, usually. Or they will say, you know, we're not comfortable, but here's where we're talking. I guess the one thing I, I, I would suggest is, because it's so rare that we have these policies that come up that are new. But I, I mean, it just, for, all I'm trying to do is save everyone time and effort, especially our attorneys. And if we were to have a public discussion before the drafting of the policy, and we, you know, and if it's clear one way or the other, we want it or we don't, then I don't think there's any need to go through the iterations of anyone spending time on these policies. And I think based on the initial discussion, if it's, if it's divided, or if it's, you know, or if it's clear that we need it, then I think off we go. And I think if it's clear that all five people agree, the board unanimously agrees, that we don't need, you know, it's not the direction we want to go as a board, then it almost seems like it could save everyone some time and effort.
Well, you know, in fairness, the, you know, the, you need, you need the public comment to figure out. I mean, I wasn't sure how I would, no, no, I understand, but if you're talking about time and, time and energy, I mean, the policy committee met about an hour and a half total on these two policies. So it's not as if it was, you know, a major amount of time put in to get to this point. I mean, I think this is the important part of the process, which is, and I think we'd all agree, is discussing it publicly and vetting it and figuring out whether we're going to move forward or not, which brings us back to the topic of whether we should move forward or not.
Doesn't seem like we're very likely to support moving forward. I think it's, I think it's fair to note that these policies almost just sailed through without anybody really paying much attention. And, you know, a couple days before our meeting, whenever it was, when they, they said their second reading, as far as I knew, I was the only one opposing the policies on the board. I hadn't heard anything from anybody else. So I mean, it's, it's good that we, that, that the community took notice. It's good that the community forcefully let the board know and the administration know what they thought. I think that it's been, especially all the student involvement, the high school student involvement, has been a really good experience and it's been really gratifying. My sense is, it's been good for the high school students too, although I think they were kind of concerned about the direction our policy was going to go and the reach that they thought it might have. You know, I don't think, you know, I, I would like to, you know, I, I agree we should abandon the effort to have policies in this area unless we see a really clear and present need to have policies like this. And I don't think we do. And I think it's, you know, the, we have code of conduct or policies that cover most of the objectionable things that people might do or say. And I think people are responsible for knowing that, and that's as much as we need to do. And I think as a community, we, we should embrace the value of open discussion and free speech and not put policies in place that are specifically aimed at that issue.
I stated my position two weeks ago, which is that I think the policies as written are, are too broad and that we should shelve these policies.
And as I said a couple times now too, I am in agreement with that. I think that, I think that we have an opportunity to figure out what kind of school we want to be and I don't think, you know, these policies reflect the kind of school that we want to be or the, and I'm, I think I want to celebrate our kids, I want to encourage them, as we talked about before, to take risks and to, you know, try things. And I think that all we can do to encourage with that them, I'd like to, I'd like to do. I, I think the two things that come up, so so much of it was said before, but I think that the two things that come to my mind, I, I also agree clearly that I think everything legally is covered for us, so we're not putting the district at risk either. But it's clearly the direction that I would like to see us go. The, the two points that I feel like we should also talk about is, in the course of this, Maria did go through our policies and realized that there actually is a policy on censorship of school-sponsored student publications and activity that's existing. And I would, and I know this is going to be another discussion, but personally, for all the same reasons that I am not comfortable with this policy, I would actually like us to take a look at that policy because I, for one, would also like to, you know, to shelve that policy as well, for all the same reasons. So I, I would just ask, maybe the board could take a look at it, maybe we could slate it for another board meeting to have a discussion on policies.
There's something for the policy committee to work on.
Yeah, they know how that works with an existing policy that, so that's one of my comments. So, and the second comment is that one of the, I think the meeting that we had with the students was, was really productive. Mostly students. I think that the students conducted themselves very well. I was really proud of them. Hopefully, everyone learned in the process, as John said, in all the years I've been involved. I think it's the most directly that students have gotten involved in these kinds of an issue. And I think they'll remember it, which is good. But one comment came up, which I know we've garnered about over the years, and I would like to throw that in the hopper to talk about also, which is, they talked about maybe, is there a student liaison to the board? Or maybe there's, you know, you could run the gamut. One or two board members could go into the student meetings, which I've done in the past when I was president of the board. Two, you could have a student rep on the board. I'm wary of that, just from a time commitment in terms of our meetings and everything. But I, I think I'd like to open that up for discussion as to what is the best way to engage the kids and who, you know, how would it work out and coming up with the manner that we could work more directly with the students or at least, you know, figure it out moving forward. I think it was a great suggestion, and I would like to follow up on that.
Well, we'll definitely do follow up on both of those. So I think, I think it's five nothing.
Very, very clear message. And I think I would like to second Mrs. Kerners' remarks in commending our students for their, their action and the, the role that they've had in this process. But I also think there's an important step for us to take in when we look at where we are and we look at items that maybe relate to these types of topics in our school, when we think of our existing protocols, when we think of our student code of conduct. I think there's value for us to go and, and look at all these things. And I, I certainly will continue to do that with the administrative team. And we, I think, as Mrs. Kerners said, I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to engage our students in, in a lot of ways that we just haven't gone there yet. And, and I think this made it abundantly clear that, that we have to take advantage of the tremendous resource we have in our, in our students. And I'm motivated to do that and to have the conversation with the board in ways that, as a leadership team, the board and administration can better connect with the kids. I know Mr. Cohen at the, the high school has initiative where he wants to meet regularly with student leaders and student council in maybe ways that are different than in the past. So I, I think, looking forward, there's going to be a lot of good opportunity. And I think there's going to, it's going to be a, a good day for our Irvington schools.
Okay, I guess now we'll move on to community comment on topics that appear on the agenda. And again, we'll just ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes. So if you could just approach the microphone, please, and give your name and where you live.
Good evening. Dan Knoller. I live in the Tarrytown portion of the Irvington School District. I want to thank the board for reaching a reasonable conclusion on the limiting free speech issue in regards to students. And I would suggest that you might want to consider going forwards, aside from everything you've mentioned, is that simply asking the students to label their expressions as not having been vetted by the school and not response, and not the responsibility of the school. In other words, it's a little bit similar to what you did with the newspaper last year, when the kids tried to put out their own newspaper. You eventually resolved by having them put on a label saying that this wasn't sponsored by the school. I think that would suffice, that plus the code of conduct. That's not actually why I stood up here tonight. I just wanted to thank you for that. What I'd like to discuss is another aspect of, I guess it's free speech anyway, as well. And that's transparency and executive session as conducted by the board. It's come to my attention that one of the topics in executive session this evening was a policy which you discussed with your lawyers. And I expressed what I understood quite well, that this was no, this was not a topic that should have been discussed in executive session. President Grados responded to that rather quickly by email. And I'd like to, and I'm sorry to do this because it's kind of stilted, but I'd like to respond to that as well so that I can make my position clear. And for any of those in the audience who'd like a copy of what I'm about to read, it's available to you. Now, what President Grados did, and let's keep in mind, I think that this is germane, he is a lawyer. He was able to quote, I guess, legal reference, I don't know, I don't speak law. You'll have to either confirm that or not. And what it said was essentially, from what I can tell, because again, I'm not a lawyer and I don't really understand what was said, and I wasn't given a translation. But what it said simply was that we can speak to our lawyers whenever we want and that, that we can do an executive session. We have client privilege, client attorney privilege. That's fine. Let's assume that that's true. Let's assume that that is correct. But aside from that, there's an issue of the optics of the situation. There's an issue of what you actually look like you're doing. So when you discuss in executive session, agenda, a policy, and don't describe the policy at all, the first thing that occurs to me and a lot of other people in this district is, what the hell are you actually talking about? What are you trying to hide that you're going to have a meeting with your lawyers about, and you won't even tell us what policy you're talking about? That's a problem. That's optics. You may have a legal right to sit in the executive session with your lawyers. I'll grant you that. I haven't even looked into that any further than I have already. But I don't see why you can, you know, you can ignore doing the right thing. It's one thing to be legally right. It's quite another to do the right thing. The right thing is to tell the people who are your clients, your constituents, what it is you're doing and why. There should be a reason. And if you don't describe the policy as anything, there's no reason. So I want to, basically what I'm asking you is, are you saying that the public doesn't need to know what the board is discussing? Because that's what the agenda, today's agenda says by admission. Thank you.
Anybody want to respond to that?
I don't know how to respond to it.
I'll start off. I'm not sure where you got your information as to what we were speaking about in executive session.
From the bylaws of the board.
It was in the agenda for the executive session.
It, it's clear in any board, a school board or any other board, that consulting with your attorneys, legal advice, is covered by attorney-client privilege and is not meant for public consumption. I'm not going to apologize for having our attorneys give us legal advice in an executive session and not doing so in public. The rest of, you know, you say you're not an attorney, but you came to the conclusion that somehow we're doing something improper. I responded to you quickly because I disagree, the law disagrees. You have every right to your opinion, but it's clear that a school board can consult with its attorneys outside of the public.
I'm not disputing that.
Executive session.
I asked you a simple question.
I'm not going to get into a conversation.
You're not going to answer the question.
I'll answer what I want to answer, Mr. Knoller.
Exactly. Thank you very much for saying so.
That's the question.
I don't even know what the question was. You started with an accusation and then.
You want me to ask you again?
Please.
What, what, what policy were you talking about that you needed an executive session and lawyers present?
I'm not going to respond to what we discussed in the executive session.
In other words, you don't have to describe the policy at all. You don't have to name the policy. Is that correct?
I don't have to tell you what we discuss in the executive session.
I didn't ask you to tell me what you discuss in the executive session. I'm asking you about the agenda.
It's a slippery slope. It's, it's still violates what we discuss in the executive session.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it's interesting.
It's, I don't, it's precedent.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
You know, the, one of the things we did talk about was, because some board members did have this concern also, what's executive session and what isn't? And legal advice on issues would be executive session.
I understand.
However, if it veered into, if that veered into a conversation where we started talking about it, then we'd have to go into open meeting. So, you know, we, we actually did, well, I was one of them. I, I needed to understand the clarification of, you know, how that works. So legal advice from our attorneys is clearly executive session. Veering off into a conversation amongst board members, clearly public meeting issues. So there is definitely a line of demarcation, just to clarify.
I guess I haven't made myself completely clear yet. Let me try one more time, please. I am discussing the agenda, not the discussion. The agenda says you're discussing a policy with your lawyers. I'd like to know why you can get away with not discussing what that policy is, whether it's a policy. When you talk about, for example, personnel issues, you say personnel issues. Why wouldn't you say what policy?
Dan, you're, you're clearly baiting us. I, I really don't see why it matters.
That's an insulting remark.
I, I think you're insulting the board.
I think you are.
I, I.
I think you're insulting.
I'm telling him.
You're working, we're all.
I'm sorry, ma'am, if you, if you want to stand for, I mean, that's fine.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
This gets into areas.
Hello, my name is Maureen McInerney and I reside here in Irvington. You work for all of us parents. You are the voice for all of us parents. We have a right to that information. So why don't you give it to us? Why are you making an argument out of it? The gentleman came up here very nicely and asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
An answer?
Ma'am, you do not have a right.
Oh, yeah, I do.
What we hear in executive session, what we talk about in executive session.
Why?
No one is asking you.
Nobody's asking that.
About this executive session.
What policy?
Dan, you're not at the microphone.
I said...
Oh, by all means.
Dan Nohler, Irvington. We are not talking about what you discussed in executive session. I am asking you a simple question and have been trying to three times, maybe four times. Why does your policy, your, your agenda statement say nothing about the policy you are discussing?
I'm going to answer this one more time and then we're going to move on.
Maybe you should retire from your volunteer position.
You know what? My wife says that to me every week.
Good, then walk out.
She really does.
Then walk out.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I am not going to violate my fiduciary duty to the district by discussing what we've discussed in executive session. I'm not going to do that. Period. I'm not going to do that. Whether you think that's right or wrong, that's up to you to come to a conclusion. But I have a fiduciary duty to the district. You do not.
You have evaded my question again.
I'm not evading your question. I'm telling you exactly why I'm not answering your question. You want to know something specific that was discussed in executive session? Okay, then we're, then we're, we're parsing words. I'm going to move on. Is there anyone else that has a comment?
Oh, yeah. Yes, Susan Stern would like to address the same issue. He is absolutely right. You need to reveal in public what the topic of the discussion is. None of the specifics of the discussion, but the community has a right to know what you are discussing. And that is part of the public authorities disclosure law. And you are evading it by parsing words. It's like Bill Clinton didn't inhale.
If you folks want, again, I feel it's improper. If somebody else wants to say something, that's fine.
My, I'm not, I'm not an attorney and, you know, there are some things about the law I feel like I understand. When you get into issues of attorney-client privilege, despite having had to dance around it for many years, part of my job, I've never understood it. And so I defer on that. And if we're, you know, if the view is that this is getting into violating an attorney-client privilege to talk about this, then fine, we shouldn't talk about it. Beyond that, you know, I very, I want everything we're doing to be as open as we can. It's always been what I want. I'm only stopped by that one concern. And if I could be assured that I shouldn't have that concern, then we should can talk about things. But I think that's the reason, from my point of view, we're not talking about it. And the reason has to do with you waive privilege in other areas and that gets to be a slippery slope and very messy, as far as I understand. But I'm a layperson on this and, you know, so I'm, that's my, that's my perspective on this. And, you know, I have all the respect for, for Dan and Susan, not so much respect for somebody who can't be civil. But, you know, we, I think we would all like to share all the information we can with the community, there are just things that you can't. That's unfortunate. I don't like that part of it.
I think that's well said.
David Kaplan, Irvington. I wanted to talk about something else, but in my annual appearance at a board meeting, I can't resist weighing in on this. I'm an attorney by training. I'm not sure that renders me completely ignorant, but I think it's disingenuous to say that you can't say what the topic is. To the extent you already acknowledge that we're going into executive session to talk about, for example, personnel, it would be completely consistent with that decision to say in executive session, we also talked about the free speech policy, the potato chip policy, today's weather, or 17,000 other possibilities that consist of one or two words. Saying that you're talking about the free speech policy, or personnel, or any other one or two-word descriptor doesn't remotely waive confidentiality. It doesn't embarrass anybody. And you've made that decision as prior boards have done, as boards have done the world over, when you say we're talking about personality. You're not saying we're talking about employee X or employee Y, or we're considering hiring or firing somebody. All you're saying is personnel, no more comment. So if you went into executive session today, for example, to talk about the free speech policy, you're not saying why. You're not saying it's because somebody's going to sue us. It's because, it's not, you're not telling anybody that it's because the ACLU are threatening to bring an injunction. All you're saying that's what we talked about. I don't much care, but I think it's a reasonable question.
And the only way I can respond to that is an interesting argument. You're right, we do say generally why we're in executive session, personnel. We don't identify the specific people.
Just say personnel.
That's, that's what we do.
So why not just say...
And so we said, we discuss policies. It's as general as any other description.
With all due respect, I think that's parsing and...
Really?
I went to the same school of parsing that you did. So, you know, I don't, I, I, I think that's ridiculous and I don't know why you wouldn't grant an answer to the question. In any event, let me waste time on a different topic. I'm heartened that the free, that these draft policies seem to be dormant or dead. I think they were misguided, foolish, and I think you lost the opportunity. Maybe you've gained it back now, you know, for a teachable moment to the community at large and to students. My guess is the draft policies as written, you don't know how they would be applied, were probably constitutional. You don't have a lot of rights K through 12 that you have outside of here. But the notion why we extol free speech and the First Amendment is not because students in our district are all going to say worthy, laudable, popular things. We are a well-behaved community. It's precisely to protect their rights to say unpopular, stupid, embarrassing, hurtful things. The purpose of the First Amendment isn't to protect popular speech. You don't need that. You need the First Amendment to protect unpopular speech. And it seems to me that would have been obvious from the outset. It took a couple of weeks, I think, for that view perhaps to take hold. I'm not sure it still has taken hold because by and large, what I heard at last week's meeting is, we're good students. We don't say unpopular things. It seems to me students ought to be saying, we have the right to say unpopular things. The reason we allow the Nazi Party to exist in the United States, why we allow anti-Semitic and homophobic and racist comments to be made is not because they're worthy things to say, at least not in my world, but because we don't trust authority. We don't trust government, school administrators, or anybody else to make the decision as to what we prohibit, including school newspapers, posters, and whatnot. And we believe that the remedy for obnoxious speech is more speech. It's the school board denouncing stupid things that are said. It's the school principal speaking up. It's other students coming forward and saying that was an outrageous thing for a student to say at an assembly. It isn't to muzzle them from the start. So what I came up to talk about is, it seems to me, if you've seen the light, you have work to do to remedy my understanding of what was the genesis for this, these policies to begin with. My understanding, and I'm not there, but I trust my 16-year-old and others, my understanding is that someone got up, a student got up last year in the student council election, election process and said something objectionable. To my ear, it wasn't particularly offensive. The worst thing about it is it wasn't funny. I think if you're trying to be funny and you're not funny, that's a great offense. But that's just me. It seems to me, though, what the district did, which is to certainly criticize that student, I don't know if he was disciplined, say that his victory in the election will be overturned and he's not allowed to run this year, which is my understanding as to what happened. The district ought to revisit that now in light of its, changing its mind. I think you ought to be apologized to, and I think the results of that election ought to be reinstated. It seems to me the students of the high school ought to be able to elect anybody they want. They can elect somebody who says good things. They can elect people who say stupid things. They can elect a racist. They can elect a homophobe. They can elect anybody. And unless somebody running for the position makes direct, imminent, and grave threats against an individual, what I, what we would consider under the ambit of bullying, that student ought to be allowed to say anything he wants. And the remedy to something objectionable is other students criticizing it. And perhaps the school principal saying, that's outrageous. But if that's who the students voted for, that's all the students ought to get. If, you know, if we didn't, if stupid people and stupid candidates weren't allowed to hold office, you know, we'd have a different Congress. Turn on C-SPAN. But, you know, that's the price we pay for democracy. And if you want a teachable moment, teach your students that you'll respect their decisions and you'll respect what the candidates have to say, however you choose, how much, however much you choose to disagree. So now that you've fixed the policy, I'd go back and fix the action.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment? Okay, thank you very much. I guess moving on to the consent agenda. Before we go to that, I wanted to thank the Friends of Irvington Football, the Robert L.R. Patton, and various anonymous donors, Gerard Stone and Joseph Altman, Celeste Ravello, Justin and Jessica Barak, Judy and Brian Sapinski, and Richard and Margaret Wood for their very generous donations, which I hope that the board will accept as part of the consent agenda this evening. So is there anything in the consent agenda that we'd like to remove? John?
Nine, five, and 10, three.
Five point five, 10 point three, okay. That's it?
Just for discussion.
I got you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda but for items nine point five and 10 point three?
Some of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. John, nine point five.
Okay. The nine point five is, it's related to, well, it's related to this whole issue of technology, which, you know, I'm increasingly feeling we don't have a very good handle on this thing. I hope we'll, yeah. We'll get to that hopefully before the fall gets too much older.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, am I losing you?
You lost us.
I'm sorry.
Nine point five is payment for extra compensation, grant funding that pertains to robotics program in the middle school?
Yes.
Are you with me now? Yeah.
I love robots.
Yeah, I love robots. You're lost in space. But what, can I just understand what the nature of the robotics program is in the middle school? And what, how it fits into the overall program? I understand this is an IAF grant, but we're presumably carving out instructional time for...
Sure.
I just feel like I want to...
So the technology program at the middle school is a state requirement. So we, is, that's not an optional program at the middle school. And as part of that program, we are required to meet really what are called math, science, technology standards, MST standards. And as part of that, the middle school developed an appropriate grant for robotics that aligns with the New York State curriculum.
And is everybody in a particular grade then doing robotics?
Yeah.
Or what?
It's a quarter, it's a, yeah.
I forgot. It's been a year or two.
Is it a quarter or a half year? In the end, it's, I think, I'm not sure how David does it now. Is it every other day? We've changed it over time. Sometimes it's been a quarter rotation every other day. It's a half. As part of New York State, at the, by the end of middle school, kids have to basically have what is called three quarters of a credit, basically. So we provide techno, in technology. So we provide technology in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. There are some schools that might only, they might do it a whole year in one grade and not do it in another grade. The way that we've done it is in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
And you have to get away from, correct me if I'm wrong, the whole idea of technology meaning computers, it's the math and sec, math and science technology behind. Like when our kids were in eighth grade, it was about building bridges. So it was the technology behind the building of the bridges, correct? So this is robotics. It's not necessarily that they're on a computer technology.
Well, but these are, these, I mean, my son did robotics for a number of years. These are, these are the, they have these profit, it's a Lego version and then there's another version that, you know, have processors built in and they move around and they do tasks. But you do program them, right? And so are they learning programming as part of this?
You know what? I would, to be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure. It's an IAF grant. It was aligned to our New York, it was aligned to the math, science, technology standards. It's aligned with our middle school program.
It just seems like a good idea to begin to get their feedback of beginning programming if we can do it.
I asked them, it's simple questions, which is, you know, technology plan has been something we've discussed for years. And I mean, robotics as a buzzword sounds great and certainly would be an improvement over, you know, clearly moving the curriculum forward from what my kid experienced. But I guess, taking a step back, I'm looking at the technology program thinking, you know, we keep saying we need a technology plan. We need an overarching plan as to where we want to be as a district and how technology fits in. And whereas I'm fine with this, I guess it just seems like it's, you know, I, I don't want to end up with a curriculum that's cobbled together with cherry-picked opportunities. I really think in order to have the best and the brightest and really optimize how we integrate technology into our curriculum, that, and how we utilize the technology piece that's required by the state, it needs to be a well-thought-out plan. When we need to figure out what we want to cover, do we want to do programming? Do we want, and then how do these pieces fall into the state core? So my only concern with this is it's now becoming a big part of the curriculum, but it's almost, it's a cherry-picked opportunity. I don't see how it fits in our overall plan for technology for K to 12 and why we're doing robotics specifically in eighth grade at this level and how there's, there should be a technology continuum for the district.
So let me clarify. This is different than any other thing we're talking about with technology. This is required by New York State.
Robotics is?
To meet the math, science, technology standards. Yes, so if, so I'll just read this. So the introduction is in to do computer programming through the robotics curriculum.
For this program?
Yes. So I'm reading, I'm just reading, I'm looking at the grant that was sent. So this is the grant. And I guess, I just want to clarify that this is not part of our initiative around what are we going to do as a district with technology? We have requirements, the same way that we need to meet the Common Core standards in English Language Arts, the same way that we need to meet the math standards. At the middle school, we are required, and for many years, we were doing more like computer applications. I think, Robin, that's what you're referring to that might have, you might have experienced.
High school engineering we were doing.
So this is a program that was designed to actually move us forward and to have us meet the math, science, technology standards at an appropriate level. So this is not part of, and I, and I'm not saying that it can't be a bigger picture, but I guess I just want to be clear. At K five, whatever we do is what we choose to do. At nine through 12, whatever we do, we choose to do. And in our middle school classrooms, whatever we do, we choose to do as part of the Irvington initiative. This is actually an effort for us to be completely aligned with the math, science, technology standards that are required by New York State. So I guess I just want to make sure, and again, this is about approving a grant, which this grant was approved last spring. So I feel like we're having two different conversations. And I would prefer to have the conversation that you're talking about in a bigger picture of a K 12, where we are K 12. This is about a grant for the teacher who's going to be teaching this course.
The only, I hear what you're saying, but I think how we meet the Common Core requirements as part of how we're going to technology in the district, I, I don't see them as two distinct and separate things. I think they're all related. So as much as you could say this is meeting the Common Core and this is going to be coming... this is meeting the Common Core, and this is going to be coming up with the goals for the district, I think in order to optimize, the whole point of doing a technology plan is that it's all fits together, how we meet the Common Core. I mean, there's a lot of ways to meet the Common Core. So, whereas, again, this is fine, and I'm sure it's great. I want our kids to do programming, things fabulous, but I, as I said, I don't want to end up with a bunch of individual things and then have to be faced with the problem in a few months as to how to put it all together to make a seamless curriculum for K to 12.
One of the things that we've asked the administration for is to set up, is one of the meetings, I think, very soon, a review of technology. I mean, I think that's really what your question's going toward is, um, this brings it up.
I mean, it's fine, but just be cognizant that, you know, I don't think this, you know, is kind of where we as Irvington want to be. I think we've got to make sure that-
Oh, it's a much smaller piece of a bigger puzzle.
Right, but it has to fit into the whole.
We certainly want to know what, well, there might be things that we're required to do, and there might also be standards that we're required to follow that don't necessarily require us to, us to do particular things. Those standards are different from required conduct, right? And then there's what, where do we educationally want this district and its kids to go, and how do we build, you know, a cohesive, productive, technology curriculum to get these kids really packed up in the right way? And that's a, you know, hopefully, in doing that, we will incidentally meet all the standards and do all the requirements without having to, whatever we do. You know, that's obviously part of the conversation we should have. It is, it's helpful when these things come before us that, otherwise we never see these things, you know, stuff we ask about.
So, I could say that I could certainly appreciate your concerns, and, and we acknowledge that there's ways to go with where we are technologically, that, that we need to be in a position where we're going to be going down a different path, and, and, and we're prepared to start that work. But what I have to say, and I have to caution, is that while we're getting to that point, we don't stop being innovative. We don't stop trying new things. This is something that's going to enrich experiences for our children, and that is going to really maybe open eyes to new opportunities, new experiences, and we wouldn't have endorsed it if we didn't see it to be meaningful. And so, big picture concept, I absolutely get it. And, and, and we acknowledge, and I think everyone in this room can acknowledge, that technology has been something that has either been sacrificed or put on the back burner for an extended period of time. And we want to bring it to the forefront, but we need to do so appropriately, appropriately. We need to be able to have the personnel to be able to support it. We need to be able to have the dollars to put behind it where appropriate. But the one thing I have to caution us is that whether it's something like this, an instructional initiative with a particular pedagogy in the classroom, we should not allow ourselves to stymie any innovation, creativity that's coming from our teachers or from our kids. And I think this is an opportunity for us to keep moving forward in small steps, recognizing that we got to shift where we're going big picture and identify what that target is at the end of the journey.
I think we all agree with that.
And nobody's speaking against that.
Okay, um, we finished up there? Uh, ten point three, John?
Ten point three, my only desire is, this is, I guess, the final southwestern, Southern Westchester BOSI's contract, and as I understand it, this is for last year. My only desire in pulling this out is it's a, it's a big chunk of money, but just to have this be there, be put in the consent agenda, even if there's no discretion here, I think this is a mistake. Because we're talking, what, one point?
Seven.
One point seven million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's a large portion of the budget. And it's all mostly, mostly special education related, things like that.
A copy was attached to your agenda?
Yeah, yeah. I did see that. I just wanted to make sure it's-
Yes, and all of the, um, program codes 100 through, I believe it's 400, um, are basically all for special ed students, well, 300s, and then also 485s are all the arts and ed programs. Um, then you've got occupational therapy, speech therapy services, council of services, also the district share of the section one for athletics. It's a portion throughout the county.
District share of what?
Section one sports.
What is section one sports?
It's sports.
Athletic con, so to speak.
Athletics.
Sports, okay, I know what that is.
Also, it's the other services that, um, the district signs up through the year. They're cross contracts with other BOSIs. Um, the Questar III is our state aid planning service that is located up in Albany, so it's a different BOSI that we cross contract through. Regional certifications, personnel, um, so it's just a variety of services. And they've already, they're all budgeted. They're all in the point four nine codes, and this is just the final document that has to be approved by the board.
Thank you.
We're good? Okay, can I get a motion to approve items nine point five and ten point three in the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Uh, I guess now we'll turn to the presentation and discussions.
Right away, Phil.
where we started off, uh, last board meeting, two weeks ago, we talked about some of the work that has been done in district. Uh, we talked about, um, some, some critical work that's been done. We talked about theories of action that have been developed that are informing some of the thinking and the efforts that are going on in classrooms. We reviewed the goals from 2012, 13. We questioned our needs, and we'll revisit both of those areas in a second. And then we started to brainstorm possible goal objectives. So, big picture here, we recognize the role the goals have. We know center this is long range planning, something that we're going to tackle this year. And we look at how other sets of goals evolve around them. And of course, when we look at building, we see that breaking off again into principals and teachers and their responsibilities. But we recognize that in this process that we face challenges, and this is something we spoke to before, and looking at the, how schools have different roles, there are different challenges that are being faced, um, whether it's what we have to do for our kids or the challenges that are faced in the district and, um, and how we are to get that work done. And in doing so last year, we crafted a couple of goals, uh, goals that, well, first, we spoke to curriculum and instruction, and recognizing the need to implement the Common Core curriculum standards or the Common Core learning standards, uh, and what that should look like in our classrooms. We had a facilities goal, so that was to tackle the issues surrounding athletic fields and to see what we need to do to be able to improve that situation. And then, of course, long range planning. And I think everyone on the board and public acknowledges still room to grow in each of those areas, and we could say that we're incomplete in, in each of those goals. Uh, so when we started thinking about our goals for this year, um, we wanted to ask challenging questions. We wanted to consider the types of experiences that we want to have for our students, much like the conversation that we just engaged in surrounding technology. We want to think about areas for improvement. We want to be able to begin to prioritize our needs, and of course, we want to use the goals as motivators to drive the work of all folks across the district. So, to frame the conversation last time, we started to think about what were those needs. I posed a series of questions that were designed to try to challenge the board, to spur conversation. And we talked about how our, uh, whether or not our students are achieving appropriate levels of proficiency in all content areas. We talked about programs in curricula, bless you, being rigorous enough to prepare our students for their future, whether or not we have a good understanding of whether our students are being successful in their classrooms, speaking to teacher assessment, talking about our secondary programs, whether they have enough option and choice for our students. While we also challenged the role of technology, as we discussed before, we talked about parent engagement and whether we're providing enough experience to not only interest our parents, but to equip them to be better partners in their children's education, talking about our budget, thinking about whether or not we should be reprioritizing our budget to introduce new things or to do different things with the funds that we have available to us, again, looking to our facilities, supporting our teachers' growth and development. So, when we thought about that, we took, these are the questions that we posed, right? So, what thoughts do you have about the district goals from last year? What objectives should we set for our work? And whether or not we can develop goals that could be, really guide the work of everybody in the district, connect, picture that diagram, right? Connect with the board, connect the leadership, connect with faculty. It must be something we can all relate to, all can own. And with that said, there were a number of thoughts generated from that conversation. And then looking at the, these, this is the thinking of the board, and I kind of went through and categorized them and how I saw how they felt. And these are the board's words that Raina sat and typed as we, as, as the board spoke. Um, and the first focus that came up, obviously, was looking at programs and curriculum, is how I categorized it. And looking at that, so if we're going to add to the curriculum, do we have to take something away? Um, the comment was, should we expand our language program? The question between French and Mandarin, should we look at opportunities for more computer programming? Looking at Common Core learning standards, what does this mean for our instruction? Do we need to go beyond the standards? Our ELA program needs to be considered. Look at our strengths, look at our needs that are present. Again, math and ELA state assessments, what do we value? How do we value it? What other data informs our thinking surrounding our student progress in those areas? How are we preparing students for life beyond Irvington? Again, curriculum mapping, some disconnects. Uh, we're looking at our curriculum here and looking to have the greatest need for what we need to consider. Where do we need revision? So, looking at prioritization, looking at curriculum renewal cycle potentially. How do we communicate with the community regarding the curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices in our classroom? The Irvington curriculum, I think this comes back to something that was said before, right? What do we want the Irvington experience to be about versus Common Core? Can they coexist? Is there one or the other? Um, again, I think the same thing as we played in the next statement, and the Common Core learning standards, is that a minimum? Do we need to go beyond that? I think we're saying the same thing in those two bullets, but in different ways. Uh, 21st century skills, how do they compare to more traditional skills? Don't want to be test centric. Testing should not be the goal, was a comment. And then another theme, preparing our students for the future, talking about college admissions. Again, um, looking at the college and career readiness process, clarity around expectations for college, acceptances, and attendance, Ivy League schools, and other school top programs, um, and making sure we're able to connect our kids with where they want to go. How do we look at the data determined for meeting the high standards of applications and acceptances? Uh, what college acceptances tell us about our program? And then marketing of Irvington to colleges. Some big picture thinking here. We know what its success is like. We see that spelled out here a few times, excellence, success, evaluating success. So, what does that mean to us? Big picture, but going down a different lens now. Tax cap and the impacts, thinking about things financially. Bigger picture, where do we want to be? Creating a vision. How does this dovetail with long tail, uh, long-term planning? And the need for the plan, uh, for us, a plan to be able to begin to prioritize. So, there were some common themes that you saw through there, or at least that I know that I saw through there. And there were focus in a couple of different areas that really stood out. A high-quality curriculum with rich learning experiences for every child, the desire for strategic and long-range planning that would generate a vision for our schools and establish objectives to inform decision-making down the road. Um, there's certainly connections with goals from the past. Um, those two strong themes that really stood out, we could probably dig a little deeper and find a couple others, but it definitely correlates with the goals from last year in the area of curriculum instruction, and of course, long-range planning. So, with that said, um, I think we're in a position where we turn back to our, to the board and think about where we left off last time, think about those goals, um, that we had last year, the connection with your conversations two weeks ago, the ideas that have been shared. Board members, for your convenience, I put copies of your notes from last time right in front of you as well. Uh, but let's think about where we want to go. There are other ideas that are on the table. Do we want to begin to consider whether those goals need to be tweaked from last year? Do we carry them forward? Because we're always committed to critical growth and development. We recognize that there's ways to go there. We're doing a lot of powerful work now. We think about facilities. There's a facilities, uh, issue that's before us with fields to this day, uh, so that's still alive. And of course, long-range planning is something that we're committed to. So, with that said, the floor and the conversation is yours.
Esther, a general comment about kind of looking at last year's goals and kind of taking a step back and, and not to get into the specifics this second about kind of people whatnot, but I think in general, last year's goals were very broad, and, um, I think they were kind of overarching, a little bit open-ended. And I, for one, feel that maybe we'd be better served being a little more specific and maybe, um, differentiating between kind of execution of day-to-day stuff, like alignment with the Common Core, which we know we're going to do, versus kind of reaching goals. Let's come up with things that we have to reach for and that maybe are a little bit more specific than last year. It's kind of an overall comment, so.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I had a similar thought in that, you know, as I was looking at all this, and I, by the way, want to just express my amazement at Raina for transcribing all of it. It was remarkable.
Yeah.
What does that look to?
But, um, um, I, I think that, you know, it would be helpful to think, you know, really of a few really deliverables that we can, can provide, that the, you can think of the, the district as providing something fairly specific and defined by the end of the year, rather, you know, it, yes, we should probably have goals to continue to, you know, provide differentiated instruction and, you know, do great things for every kid all the time. You know, those sorts of things are great, maintaining everything. But maybe it's just useful to break down a few fairly defined things that can be fit in.
It strikes me that these goals that we set for ourselves last year feel like, almost like long-range goals. The timeframe, when you reread these, is, is quite long-term. It, creating and implementing differentiated curricula that use data, and that's, to create curricula does not happen overnight. It's a longer-range goal. It strikes me that one thing that we didn't say last year that maybe is even a first step, and I don't know if this is specific enough to what you were saying, um, and that is, we really should be reviewing our curriculum as it is today and finding the gaps, especially the gaps from a transition standpoint as people are moving from school, from grade to grade, from school to school. Uh, where are the gaps in continuum of, of the quality of the, um, of the curriculum and the nature of the curriculum? And then, um, being clear with ourselves about exactly where we want to focus on in some of the, the areas that we've highlighted as, as new areas that would require additional expense most likely, and that would be technology, possibly, uh, language additions.
Or subtractions.
Right. But that, effectively, there were, there's going to be an addition from a perspective of the, the, the teachers that we would need to have in the curriculum.
Of course you have.
Because it seems to me that we have to really understand what our curriculum is today and what we assess the weaknesses in that curriculum to be. Since I've been on the board and since I've been coming to board meetings, we seem somewhat loathe to admit that publicly, and I don't know whether that's, uh, you know, just a habit, that it's kind of hard to be reflective in public when we're talking about curriculum that someone might have designed, or teachers that we may feel are not necessarily doing what we want them to do. But ultimately, we have to be more honest with ourselves about where the weaknesses are and be public about it, even if it means, um-
All of that's my fault.
Pretty public, yeah.
You're taking responsibility.
You stole my thunder. It was supposed to be a joke. I was just telling Phil that that's all my fault, just to keep the theme of the evening, but I wouldn't, you know.
Um, the curriculum mapping initiative that you're starting this year, I feel would help with this.
Yeah.
Um, coming from, I have, I think, a different perspective than other board members, because as a mother of twins, over the years, through the grades, I've compared. So, you know, you could see I've, my own little analysis, that's not formal, um, you know, you could see where there is- You know, you could see where there is, as a grade, they're cohesive, where they're teaching the same things as opposed to, and protect, and different styles of going about it, but you're learning the same, having the same learning experiences as perhaps the next grade up or down, doesn't matter. But also, I think the curriculum mapping would also help build one grade into another. And I feel like there might be a disconnect between K-5 through 6 through 12. And I feel like I'm seeing a little bit more of that gap with math this year. I don't know, that could just be my own.
The Common Core, probably.
Because of the, right, exactly. But I think.
It is a disconnect.
Right. But I feel like this curriculum mapping that you are starting this year would help us get to that point.
So, so I guess in a response to that, I may jump in. I think you're absolutely correct that there's, it is going to address that because we're going to look at that, not only alignment to standards, which is a requirement, but we're going to look at the Irvington aspect of the education that's built around that. But we're going to be able to identify where there are gaps, where there are inconsistencies that may exist. When we come back to trying to understand, Phil, where, how we're assessing our students' need, well, we can look to the state tests as a part of that picture. But realistically, we need to focus on developing a solid assessment program in our district where we have benchmark assessments, where we're able to compare those common experiences. So if you have a girl that's taking English in one classroom and one taken in another, how do we know that they're achieving, the kids are achieving similar levels of expectation and similar quality of education, even though those teachers, even though those teachers may have some different paths to that endpoint? So that's absolutely a part of that. And I think there's going to be a lot of value that's going to come from that. Not only is it going to make our curriculum certainly more cohesive, are we going to be able to look at how it's, again, the word mapping, right? So how it's spreading out through the district to look at that vertical alignment. So when we turn and think of a teacher that is teaching a skill or teaching content in a particular grade and has a cohort of kids that are having some trouble with it or kids that are just getting it, that they'll be able to go back through this particular software and be able to see where it was taught before. They can see what units it was taught in, the resources those teachers used to get a glimpse into why those kids are so good, why those kids may need some help, maybe to pull other resources. So there's all kinds of instructional opportunities that are wrapped around this. But the thing we have to be mindful of is that we're looking at K-12 curriculum. We're looking at this, and I've said this before, that we have to be mindful that this is something that's done overnight, that this is, this is a process. And it's going to take us a few years to get there.
Oh, so that was my next question. Is it realistic to think that you, so in other words, you won't be able to do a full analysis, a full curriculum mapping by the end of this school year? No way? Okay.
You know, I also, you know, I have a little bit of this, I think the kind of horizontal, the consistency Maria is talking about seems important, seems like a good idea. But it's, it's, it's like, you know, you have a nice internally consistent articulated K through 12 system, but what we really ought to be thinking about, we ought, we certainly should have that, but we really should be thinking about is, once we get to 12, are these kids where we want them to be, where they should be, where they can be? And how are they doing, are they in the right place to be doing well two, three, four, five years later in college and/or career stuff? And are we, are we doing anything to reach out and find out how kids are doing? And, you know, then we work backwards into getting the pieces. And yes, getting it all nice and consistently and mapped right, but it's not enough just to be mapped and consistent.
So is the broader question, how do we define success?
Yeah.
Well, but that's, that's what I was going to say. So my question was going to be kind of a rhetorical, well, what does that look like, John?
Yeah.
And that's something that I don't think we define necessarily within the district goals. The district goals help us map a pathway to get there. And when we're looking big picture, long-range planning, I think that's where we come together and we paint that picture of what does an Irvington graduate look like?
Right. Well, maybe, maybe, I would find it useful, I mean, start thinking about what we can do this year, begin a process of trying to evaluate what skills, aptitudes we expect people to graduate with and what the process we can have for evaluating whether their graduates are then successful. First of all, getting into the colleges and then what, whether they're successful once they're in college.
Do you mean at the level of what Phil said, though? Where, where, these would be where are the gaps and where are the holes?
At the level, but I'm trying to bring this down to something that could specifically be approached in a, in a one-year timeframe to begin to put some meat on it.
Right. I think that's the key thing, is how do we actually define these objectives so they are actually something that we can achieve this year?
Yeah.
So can you just explain, I don't want to lose John's thought, but I want you to go back and elaborate as to why curriculum mapping, how do we define curriculum mapping so it's not a long-range goal? How do we define it in a way?
I think we would benchmark what our objective would be and what we would intend to achieve this particular year. So we could say, set us down, I'm trying to, maybe help me with this, I'm trying to think, K-5 ELA would achieve a certain, trying to think, what point would we want to get the first, a percentage of the year potentially? Or?
I guess, could you just clarify the question again, did that just say?
Well, I think, right, so I, you know, I said, can we examine our curriculum to identify the holes and to ensure that there's a continuity of pedagogy from K through 12? And then Robin or Maria said, that sounds, Maria said, that sounds like the mapping project which you have said you were going to undertake. So now, and then we all agreed that that was an interesting objective. And we said that mapping might take longer than a year. And what I'm trying to do is define what aspect of the mapping can we actually accomplish in a year so we can turn this into a goal that we can say in June, we accomplished this with our mapping effort.
So let me just, and maybe.
And just further, I would just say, maybe we should be focusing the mapping effort on the subject areas that we think are most in need of thorough diagnosis.
I guess what I would say is that there's a couple of pieces. Curriculum mapping is incredibly time-consuming. So part of meeting the goal is allowing for the time. So teachers having the time, because to curriculum mapping, work in as a team. You don't just work in isolation. If you want to have consistency across your grade level, you work as a team. So we might say that by the end of the year, we will have in some subject areas our skills so that we would have a continuum of skills put into the map. Not necessarily every unit designed, not necessarily every assessment developed, but we might be able to put in all of the skills so that we can look across the grade levels and we could say, what skills are we, are we meet, are we teaching to and what skills will we measure?
Just wait, just one question. Terminology-wise, is mapping, mapping what we're doing today or is it sort of improving as you're going along? Sorry, John.
No, that's not. Good. I was just saying, giving, encouraging Phil and saying it was good. Wasn't really necessary.
I just want to make sure I understood what mapping is because I assumed that mapping was just identifying what we're doing today, the textbooks that are being used, the, right.
So no, so that's a great, yeah. So I think, and I, and maybe what would be helpful moving forward is at some point showing you what the mapping looks like because I think having a visual for it would be very helpful. It's much more extensive than that. It actually is for every unit of study that we do in every subject area, having our framework for each unit developed. So that means they, every unit is framed on essential questions and during understandings, the content, the knowledge and skill that we expect in that content, our summative, formative and pre-assessments for each unit, as well as a very defined scope and sequence for what a year would look like for each student at every grade level. So it's really quite complex, which is why we can't commit to doing something like that quickly. Also, it requires, and this is a good thing, but it takes time, it requires a commitment district-wide. So it means whether I'm a first-grade teacher or whether I'm a ninth-grade teacher, I am committing to the same framework, the same structure for my unit design so that we can look across our classroom as well as in an interdisciplinary way to see how are we meeting the standards? And I think at this point, maybe there's, maybe there's clarity around how the Common Core learning standards, especially at the secondary level, it dovetail the, through social studies and science, the literacy skills. So the other thing that the curriculum mapping is going to do for us, especially in a 6-12 environment, is it start, it's going to start to link how we're providing learning for kids in both their ELA classroom as well as in their content area classrooms of social studies and science specifically, as well as mathematics. So it is a very layered and a very complex process that once you have that in place, it's there and you just keep going back in and then you're just doing the revision. So what you referred to, Phil, like, how do we look? How do we look at this? Once we have this done, we're going to really easily be able to go in and look for standard changes. We're going to be able to go in and see where we're teaching a standard and where we can embed a new change that we need, feel we need to make. So we're at a very beginning, we're at a very early stage and that early stage, I think, is the most complex and the most important stage to do correctly.
And it does seem like kind of dovetailing what these guys said. I think that's a great thing to have and it sounds like it's a long-term project to get it done right. But I also think concurrently with that, we, we clearly can identify areas that need improvement. I mean, I don't think we need to wait until we finish the entire schools. And I think that's maybe a little bit more we're talking about for the, kind of the specific goals that we want is identifying some areas where we, look, we know from the data that we have currently that we need to improve here, here, here. And I think maybe identifying those benchmarks for the end of the year as opposed to waiting for the entire curriculum map to be done.
We might do something like, let's say, let's pick two subject areas where we know we have a big series of issues and take concrete steps by the end of the year to put in place changes that we think are there by the problem. It could be a specific goal. Can I just?
Yeah. Well, I was just going to, Raina just said, and it was similar to what I was going to say. Raina said October and I was thinking hours associated with it. And I think we have to look at defining, how are we going to say that we have two areas or one area? One area that came up was clearly ELA. We've made great strides mathematically, right? We would not say that.
Judging by test scores, please.
Judging by test scores, correct. So.
Test scores alone, I'm sorry.
I know, but on that issue, and listen, I, there's no question that we are behind the eight ball in putting these goals together, you know? So the board needs to own that. We're late in getting to this process. But, but I think that just because it's October, if we do identify areas that, you know, as John said, that need to be corrected, we can offer specifics, you know, I mean, yeah, it's going to take time, it's going to take effort, but I think we're going to have to move forward and take care of those things. And yeah, it's October and it sucks, but, you know, I think we're going to need.
My thought is, you know, you're, yes, you, we don't expect any, you know, superhuman efforts.
Right.
But you will get an nasty, I don't want, I don't, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, no, I get it, I get it. I just don't want, I don't want, I don't want the public to think, well, you know, the board's giving you goals late and therefore we're putting all this stuff off for another year. Because I could tell you, that's not going to fly with anyone and hopefully it doesn't fly with you folks as well, so.
Can I just raise one point? Can we have a separate discussion about the whole curriculum mapping thing? Because I'm just interested in hearing how that process is being done. I wonder, for example, is this something we have to do alone? I mean, are the districts doing the same thing and is there economy to scale and sharing the work?
Well, we've got to see what the district is doing.
Well.
I guess, I think, I think what John's saying is really, like, I think you need to say, it's not something you do in partnership. It is Irvington School District is mapping the Irvington School District. It's what you're saying. It's the Irvington School District curriculum. It's not Oresley's, it's not Dobbs, it's Irvington.
And my question is, if it's so resource-intensive to develop it, do we need?
Is it worth it? Is it worth it? I mean, maybe if you're looking at pieces of it.
I have the same curriculum.
See, but to me, and I don't want to go down this path.
Yeah, I think we should have that discussion some other time.
But I just want to make a point, I don't want, to go back to the comments that we just went through from the last meeting, a piece of it almost sounded like we're being a little contrary because we're talking about wanting to have, don't want to lose what's special about Irvington education. We want to have the niceties, the, the things that we like in Irvington, things that are locally valued. We don't want to just stop at Common Core learning standards. So at the same time, we can't turn and say, well, let's just buy a packaged curriculum and, or let's just send a group of people to collaborate.
I'm just wondering aloud, why not, we could conceivably cooperate with other districts who have similar aspirations.
Well, everybody has different programs, there's different policies, kids are in different places achievement-wise. But a question.
Yes.
And I'm not going to argue. So when we look at curriculum, there may be a curriculum goal that's got some defined benchmarks associated with the curriculum mapping piece. ELA specifically, specifically came up in conversation. So looking at ELA needs and whether that's looking at pockets where, I think last night specifically, someone mentioned middle school scores, looking at what's happening in, in high school and whether that is the reading, whether the sequencing of courses, the skills that are being taught, whether it's reading from, you know, what the kids are reading this summer, what they're reading throughout the year.
But I don't want to lose sight of something. I mean, getting back to what we talked about is identifying areas of weaknesses because honestly, the curriculum is one piece of the pie. It's not the only piece. How the curriculum delivered is a big piece of this too. So we might have the best, perfect, most seamless K-12 curriculum, but if we don't have the people in the classroom that are going to execute that in a way that it's really resonating with the kids, then all of this work you're doing really isn't worth the value that the paper is printed on. So I, I don't want to lose sight of, I don't want to get.
You just brought the A D P R together with the Common Core.
Exactly. I mean, I just, I don't want to sit here and forever, you know, harp on curriculum without really, I mean, it kind of does come back to what are our kids like, you know, where are the holes and how do we know? Well, let's look at where, how they're performing outside or, you know, I just, I mean, there's so many data points. So that's one. And clearly the A D P R is.
Can I come back to, you're talking about the delivery of instruction?
Well, can I say one other thing also because it ties into this? And you said this a long time ago and it happened, but it kind of ties in a little bit is you talked about, and I just don't understand if this is something you're doing or you think we need to do, but you talked about, we really need a solid assessment program in the district because, you know, clearly the state test is one data point. And I don't think that is the data point that we want to hang our hat on. So I need to understand from your comment, I don't know if you're saying, I didn't know what you meant by that. Do we have it? Are we doing it? Or is it just a thought that we needed as a goal? How does that fit into this mix also?
I think Raina just spoke to it a second ago. Do you want to reiterate what you said?
The solid assessment program?
Well, then, when we're talking about designing the units, that we're talking about putting in consistent assessments where we're going to have teachers that are going to have similar formative assessments, that are going to have benchmarking assessments. So we come to the end of a unit that we have quality assessments to measure our students' growth.
So you're saying it's something in theory that you're going to do along with the curriculum map? I was thinking it was something that we can do now that we can kind of be able to get a.
So we are doing that now. So let, let me clarify. We are doing that now. So I don't want any of you to think for one second that we're not actively working on our curriculum, that we're not actively addressing the concerns that have been shared. We are actively doing that every single day, K through 12. So how it looks varies depending on the school, depending on the level, depending on the needs. So assessment is a really good example. So for the assessment, because we're rolling out these new math assessments, for instance, we're looking, we're giving these assessments and we're going to start to make sure we're looking at the data. We're going to start to really check ourselves on what are kids demonstrating as their knowledge and skill for this new, the new Common Core math? And where do we not see the growth of the shift? Part of the issue, Maria, that you identified, the issue like in ninth grade is the kids in ninth grade math are being taught the new Common Core curriculum, which is, and English, and which is a shift from what they were taught two years ago. So some of the gaps we're seeing are a result of the Common Core. So we are actively working our assessments. We have developed for our ELA units, K through 8, we're working actively to create pre-assessments, ongoing formative assessment and post-assessments.
Can I ask something else?
Yes.
Because it seems like part of this also is communication.
Yeah, I was going to say the exact same thing.
So can you, can you figure out a way where maybe, especially in this area, because I think it's something we're also concerned about, that you guys can better keep us abreast of all the stuff you're doing and kind of where we're headed? Because otherwise, I don't think we have any idea. I.
No, and, and, yeah, I mean, I was going to say the exact same. No, and, and, yeah, I mean, I was gonna say the exact same thing. I mean, I, I think that, you know, Mr. Stern wants to know if, if he feels that the ELA is lagging, and I'm sure you do, then, that, just to pick on you, Howie, cause I, I gotta pick on somebody. But, but no, the point is, is that the board doesn't know and I don't think the public knows. I, I believe you're doing all this work and I, I just don't think that we're, we're communicating enough to the public as to what we're doing, you know, X, Y and Z to better our ELA curriculum. That, that, that's, I think that's the point.
So we'll be glad to do it because it's a change in fact about the hard work that is going on and to show up what we're doing.
Is the curriculum thing one of the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is the curriculum one of the presentations that we're getting in the next couple of weeks? I don't know if we ever.
We have, we're reprioritizing the order based upon.
Yeah, I know, I was like giving.
Unless we just sent him.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I apologize.
It wasn't until the spring and it's too long.
Yeah, we got, we have to do that sooner than later.
There's only so many meetings, which is the problem.
The curriculum mapping, are you, I'm sorry, were you referring to curriculum mapping?
No.
No, 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 just the, the overall curriculum, just, I think we asked for more of a, it was more of a status and what's going on, right?
Curriculum and extracurriculars and instruction, that was the thing.
Oh, we're adding six.
What we're gonna do, what, what we will do is that we have to be reasonable in, in looking at how long you wanna be able to sit in your chairs because there's gonna be some serious endurance tests associated with some of this. Let us go back, let's look at the things that, that we think that would be important to bring forward out of this conversation and if we're not hitting the mark specifically for what you're looking for, then you let us know and we'll find a way to either tweak those presentations or to add a different one.
But I guess my comment about communication was more of an ongoing thing. It wasn't tied to a specific board presentation. I mean, I think maybe we all need to figure out on an ongoing basis and not to create more work, but a little bit of information each week and then we're there versus having to all of a sudden find all this time to do this big old presentation would be really hard.
I was just gonna say, we need to have a community, a goal that is communication specifically related to curriculum.
Yeah.
Cause essentially, you know, last year, if you think about our uber curriculum goal that had sort of three sub-points to it, those sub-points were not terribly specific. They were great statements, but they weren't specific. I guess I could imagine us having a curriculum goal that has three sub-points, one involving the mapping project itself, providing regular updates to the board and the community about the progress of the mapping so that it's, so that the community and the board are invested in the, in the process that you're engaged with. The second one would be identify specific short-term improvements to curriculum that can be tangibly delivered on by the end of the year. And I, and again, that would be.
And can we, we may go and make that broader to encompass what Robin said, that not just say curriculum, but associate teaching and learning within that statement.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, and I might, you know, that might be fine, but I might say it's not so much that we have to do it, but accomplishing improvements by the end of the year. Cause I think it's, it's hard to change what you're doing.
Of course.
But to identify the issues.
Identify what those are.
No, I think there needs to be some progress. I mean, I think, you know.
All right, well, that's.
We're saying.
There needs to be progress. I don't know, in any job, you've gotta make progress in you.
But what I, what I'm nearing though, is John is saying it doesn't have to be completion. We want, we want progress and then we want to settle everything else.
Have in mind that sometimes you have your instructional plan set for, except for a year, but you.
Right. And so my third one was just to reiterate what Robin just said, which is, cause there's three, unfortunately, I think identify areas for growth and measure progress, that was supposed to be tied to the short-term improvements.
Oh, let's start with that. I got it, okay.
Those are linked together. The third one would be specifically about communication.
See, but I, I actually differ on that. I mean, I, again, it's kind of what gets back to what I said in the beginning, which is I think there are goals in terms of we need to reach for and there's some things that I think are just inherent of the day-to-day job. And I kind of believe that communicating to us what's going on on a curriculum level shouldn't be a goal. I shouldn't have to expect them to go above and beyond. I should feel like that's kind of wrapped up in the action of day-to-day.
But it's developing a system of communicating in the district, cause they.
I still, to me, that's not a goal. It just, it's a given, it's part of the job.
I guess they're sort of, to me, they're different sorts of goals. I mean, one is, these are sort of.
They're not doing it soon.
One is, one is this is how you wanna operate all the time. And the other is, these are changes, these are movements you wanna make toward, toward a goal.
Right, yeah.
But a goal could be just, we wanna operate.
There's like operating goals and then there's like, kind of.
It's how you do it and what you're doing.
Yeah.
Are we, where we need to be for tonight on this?
Well, do we?
Well, that's just, that's just curriculum.
Long-range planning? Is that something that we want to revisit that goal? Do we wanna tweak how that goal looks? Is there?
Well, look, I'm on it.
Something else to file? Come on, Johnny, have some wheels going.
It's quick to read. Press quickly.
This is, you, did you tweak this from last year?
I'm trying to find the, the long-range plan, long-range goal.
Here, here.
Do you have a hard?
Um.
So this long-range planning goal is exactly what you had last year.
This is, this is our last year's goal. See, I have the goals from last year.
Yeah, okay. Just remember it.
This is the goals from last year, yeah. I, I mean.
I think it's a good goal. We can do it.
But, but the question, well, the question to me, wait, the question to me, it's interesting because, I mean, I think there's, the question to me is maybe, is the long-range planning goal, I mean, it's partly a district goal. It doesn't really play into the day-to-day learning. I mean, again, I think there's levels. So I'm, I'm fine with that, but again, that, that plays into the strategic plan that we're talking about and there's so many other pieces to that, but it's not really, like you said, it's definitely not an operating day-to-day level thing.
But we should be able to deliver on this by the end of the year, based on the goals that John and I have set for ourselves as our subcommittee on the board.
To develop the long-range goals, I mean?
Well, to.
Get the process underway, I guess.
And I'd have to argue, there is a fair amount of day-to-day involved in, in making that happen. So did not just, it's just not the time that people are gonna be sitting in this room or in focus groups or in subcommittees analyzing data or brainstorming ideas. There's a lot of work that's gonna be in between all those points.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, all these will involve a lot of work along the way. Differences between work to get to a point of accomplishment and you can stop working toward a goal versus other things where we just day in and day out, for example, we do our time, wanna be communicating well.
I think if we just change the wording here that says complete, you know, instead of saying create and begin to implement a process of determining long-range plan, we just say, create the long-range plan and then these other bullets underneath it are actually parts of the long-range plan that we have to do. Yeah.
As long as we agree.
It's just a.
We, we debate about whether those are part of our long-range plan, but, yeah.
Right. Well, it's got the financial piece in there that you've suggested and.
But it varies, I mean, I think we, I wouldn't mind putting some timeframe on the goal so that it's not so esoteric.
Yeah, that's good.
So can we say that maybe John, Phil and I will connect and play around with the language a little bit with this?
Yeah.
And, and then put some venerable objective in there so we make sure we have the deliverable here's in.
Makes sense.
And the only other thing that we had last year was about our physical plant, right?
Fields.
Well, yeah, you know, on that point, I, you know, I, it's probably not the right time for a, a large discussion, but, you know, with what we've heard from the state on East Field and what we've seen preliminarily, and I know we're waiting for the finals, but we're gonna have to make a decision collectively on ultimately what to do with East Field and then that brings up Mazaris as well. You know, there's a lot of other communities around us that are moving forward with bond initiatives, you know, long-term bond initiatives to, to shore up their fields. And, and I think that in dealing with East Field, that question, it was a question that we should've dealt with last year until the East Field issues came up. Now, I think, once we start to deal with East Field, we're gonna have to deal with that. So I, I, I believe that the Fields issue is a goal. I believe it is.
One way or another, it's a goal.
See, I, I don't, I mean, to me, again, it's more of, it's a reality and we're, we're gonna do it and we have to do it, but I don't necessarily think it's a goal. I, I don't know, I just.
Well, it keeps the pressure on us, right? I mean, it keeps the pressure on us to get something done and, and not let it go another year.
Well, then, if we're gonna say facilities goal, then I wanna take a step back, cause this was very specific to the Fields and I think we need to take a step back and think about all of our facilities and what's our goal. I, I mean, cause to me, that includes the space study and, I mean, I think there are other goals that might fall under the facilities label than simply the Fields. And I'm, I'll think, I mean, outside of the space, that's what comes to mind now, but I would wanna just think about it for a little, cause I haven't really been thinking along those terms yet, so.
I think when we actually originally discussed this facilities goal last year, it was broader and then I think when it got written, it ended up being a little narrower.
Right.
And the other, the other, I'm sure we'll get to Fields, but the other issue with Fields is this, this community is rejecting efforts to, 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 and I think, to my mind, part of that is people, I know, I know that a lot of people were feeling like, why isn't the district dealing with what I consider is important, like curriculum or, or, you know, the, the math program is, is crazy trailblazers and yet they're wasting all this money on Fields or whatever. And you get a lot of resistance and people don't feel, when people feel like it's just the people who use Fields who are getting taken care of and the rest of the district is not doing enough. So, you know, I think if we can show progress in a lot of areas, it'll make it easier, including a long-range plan, it'll make it easier to get the community to support whatever financing needs to be done for Fields or whatever else we decide.
It's fair.
And I think it's, it's, to your point, it is totally tied in because ultimately, you know, there's only so much money that people are gonna be willing to bear the cost of. And if, if, you know, putting in, obviously, we're not talking about this, but if putting in tennis courts and lights and blah, 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 meant not, you know, not starting language at a younger grade, not that we're in that place at all, is a crazy exaggeration, but we need to determine our priorities as a board. So then I think we'll have a better, clear understanding of where we need to go, how we're gonna execute these goals.
I also like that.
And that's part of the long-range plan.
Exactly. But I think the Fields is a big part of that.
I like the idea of the facilities, broadening it to, to be clear with ourselves and the community that the Fields are part of our facilities. They happen to be a very visible piece and there are less visible pieces that may need to be addressed along the way. You know, if you're considering a Fields initiative that costs millions of dollars, if there are other problems with our facilities, we really need to be clear about that now.
Right, right.
So we're looking at the facilities goal, we see Fields being one part of that. Are there a few other bullets that get roped into that?
Well, the, the space study.
Space study, clearly.
Yep.
And we're anticipating a conversation on that in the near future?
Yep.
And then the health of our. The goal is to make a decision, right? The goal on the space study would be to kind of make a determination this year as to what direction we're gonna go to. I don't, I think we all agree that's gotta be a goal.
And, and urgency, you gotta take their personality around that, budgetary decisions around that.
Well, there are other capital projects, you know, there's the Dust Bowl, which, you know, is still a mess and will always be a mess until we devote money to it to fix it.
And then I'm, I'm guessing we're gonna have to start looking at putting money into dazzling Fields at some point, cause we're really using them a lot since we're lacking Fields up here and I'm assuming that's gotta be a priority at some point. We haven't really talked about it, but.
We just need to know what it takes to get the Fields and the facilities we wanna have.
Exactly. It seems to me that we have a responsibility to be clear to ourselves and you decide what those things are and then the district has to vote and whether or not this is important.
Prioritize, yeah. And a couple more things. My own personal list of goals. And we touched on this in, in kind of your questions or whatever, and again, I guess maybe curriculum instruction falls under, but the whole, the whole idea of, I mean, the whole ball of wax for guidance and positioning the district, marketing the district, college acceptances, I mean, I think it's all wrapped up together. There's a lot of bullet points in there and I think clearly, I think that, to me, that should be a goal. It's very broad and I, I would like to see that worked in somehow into this mix.
If it's, it's a separate thing, don't you?
Separate goal.
Yeah, it's something we oughta, yeah, I, I think it's important too. I think it's an important part of what this district should be doing. Does it, I guess, the question is, is it doing it as well as it can?
Well, I think a lot of us feel, and, you know, for however reason we got here, a lot of us feel it's an area that can use a little improvement. I mean, you know, these are the other areas of the district where, might be further developed or further along the path. On my kind of shortlist is also, getting back to what we talked about earlier, but the technology plan, which I think we could, so many schools are utilizing technology to take their curriculum forward or to kind of open up more opportunities to kids in the classroom. Again, I, I don't, you know, we even talked about how we all feel about it, but I, I think at some point, we need to, and I would like to see that done sooner than later. I mean, you know, we've talked about technology plan year after year after year, not before you were here. But, so to me, that would be another goal and, and I'm not saying we're gonna accomplish it all, but I just think we, I don't wanna backburner that another year. I feel like every year we backburner, it's another two or three years down the pike, then any changes are gonna take place at the kids' level, at the classroom level.
I would definitely support doing it. See what it's all about, get, get technology this year.
I had thought, when I had spoken earlier, I thought that was gonna be part of the short-term improvements and I know tech, I didn't mean to shortchange technology that we're gonna come up with like three more robotics programs, but I meant that mapping, I think Raina suggested, was a multi-year project, whereas the short-term improvements were, you know, over the next 12 months. And I'd saw, I'd seen technology as being part of that because that would be an improvement or an area of growth or addition.
Kind of both, though. I guess a good is both. Like you could, the longer-term plan would be a longer term, but I, there's probably footholds that we could initiate, you think?
Right.
What goes under short-term? Maybe it would be helpful, if you just wanna say that, Phil, just so I capture that, so I just say it's like under short-term, I put technology, but is there something else that?
Well, to review of, a review of current curriculum and what are the, what are our short-term opportunities with our current curriculum?
Yeah, opportunities, yeah.
Technology is obviously a.
Broad, broad.
It's a, it's a, well, it's broad, but it's also, it's not really in our current curriculum in any substantial way, so it represents an addition.
And I guess another goal, another goal on my hit list. One more thing I have on my hit list is, it's efficient, it's something we've talked about for a long time, but efficiency of resources. I mean, and maybe that's tied up in the teaching and learning, but, you know, there're definitely areas I feel that perhaps we could get a bigger bang for our buck if we looked at improving.
Can you specify what you mean by efficiency of resources?
Um.
Staff utilization?
Yeah, yeah, staff utilization.
So.
It's really what I'm talking about, yeah. And again, I, I mean, I could give you a few examples, but in general, I think, you a few examples, but in general, I think, you know, is it possible to identify maybe a few areas where we could either deliver the same or better instruction by utilizing less staff or different staff, or we could change? I mean, just because we've had certain configurations doesn't mean we need to keep it. I just think we need to look at it.
So, to me, that comes-
I mean, HR, do we need to look at HR? Are we happy with how it's running? Do we feel like it's the best use of our resources?
Oh, so, all right, so we're looking, you're looking big, so you're stepping outside of instruction.
But it is instruction too, but yeah, overall. I always think, I always come back to, since I don't want to keep growing the pot of money, I could, I would like to always keep an eye on, maybe there's a better way to spend the existing funds that we have. And so, again, I don't know what that means, but I, to me, that's important. I, I can, you know, that's all I'm going to say now.
I think I got a picture of the ask. The challenge is going to be able to try to map this into a few goals that are going to be well-connected, that are going to be able to have us focused and have some relationship among the objectives here.
Well, I think we're going to have to prioritize. There are a lot of goals here, and we're going to have to cherry pick which ones we think are more important than the others.
We've at least narrowed down the list from last week, so this is a-
And added a few things.
Yeah. I don't know that this list is shorter than last week. It's just, you know.
It is. So, so what we're going to do on our end over the next couple of days is to play with this and try to see if we can put it into some kind of statements. We'll float them around. And I think we need to be committed that when we come back here on the 22nd, not only are we going to have other business that we're going to deal with, but we're going to try to, even if there's a little wordsmithing when we walk away, that's fine, but agree in principle to what the goals are. And then, I guess, my question and challenge to the board is, the next step is, so your goals then too. How do your goals relate to that as the next step?
Any board goals?
Board goals. So, if we come back to that, like, second or third slide in that presentation and look at, you know, we have our little solar system of, of motivation, we can call it, I guess, and, and the goals that are floating around there, what are the board's commitments in this mix to support this type of work and to support betterment in education for all the kids in, in the district, your financial stewardship, whatever the case may be?
I was going to delegate all that to John.
I think what we have to do is turn the tables and get you to sort of give us your wish list, and then we'll write it down, and then we'll come back.
That's right.
We could do that. So, good. So, I think that's a part, part three to come. Good. I just want to make sure you save that.
Since now we're going to get a report on the school safety improvements that, that have been added. Do you need some water?
Okay.
Okay.
Is there more water?
I don't think so.
Yeah, do you need a one, one quarter? I'm going to get two of them.
So, obviously, safety enhancements became a major focus this year after the Newtown tragedy. But I have to tell you, coming back to my initial visits to the district, there were concerns that I had about safety. I can reflect on one of my first walkthroughs with Bob Rowley and just being amazed and thinking about how our campus was constructed, thinking about that these buildings renovated, built onto new facilities that were constructed post-Columbine, post-9/11, with all the open space, lack of security, doors that you could pull open even when they're locked, open-air spaces everywhere, concept of an open campus, that we have food deliveries coming to the stool, that we have our kids going into the village to buy meals. Just raised a lot of concerns and things that aren't achievable. You find things like that in a lot of suburban communities. So, there certainly were no surprises. From there, I can remember my first walkthroughs with Gary Knowles, our facility supervisor, and beginning to address and look into some of these issues. And he and I were having ongoing conversation until this unfortunate day hit us last December. And in doing so, we had to respond. And we recognized what our objectives are, what our needs are, and we know we have an ultimate responsibility to provide the safest environment possible. So, without our kids being safe and secure in our schools and our care, education isn't going to happen. So, with that said, when we talk about that responsibility, it's just not doors that lock or having a security guard, but facility maintenance, communication ties into this, and of course, emergency preparedness, having detailed update, updated emergency plans, that we're practicing various scenarios related to those plans, and that we provide our staff with training. So, moving into this year, we took a number of steps. And I've kind of categorized these as additions and some updates. And in doing so, we look at an addition. At one point in time, we had security greeters. They became subject to budget reductions over the years, but we acknowledged there was concern, that there was a, a lack of some accountability related to guests coming and going from our schools. So, this year, we contracted with an outside security firm. We have security greeters in each of our schools that have training and have experience either in security or in law enforcement. All of our doors are locked at the elementary schools. Campus buildings are open, but visitors are directed to the security desk. Each visitor must sign in, present valid ID, and we recognize this is an area that we're continuing to work on. Visitor passes are issued, and these visitor passes expire after one day, so someone can't walk back through and try to recycle a pass a day later. We had implemented two-way radios. When we think about the size of buildings and the level of communication that just must occur in the schools from just a pure operational standpoint, we had schools that did not have walkie-talkies. We had schools that had walkie-talkies, but maybe you could not, because of the layers of brick and mortar and steel, you could not communicate with somebody more than 150 feet away from one another, let alone when children went outside at recess, when we had PE classes outside, when a teacher took a class outside to teach a lesson involving nature, shall we say. But now, we have an effective two-way radio system. This radio system not only will allow communication to happen from one side of the building to the other, across the playground, but we have communication that can occur from building to building in most cases. We, our administrators are equipped with radios. Our security desks each have a radio. Our nurse does, head custodians. And then we have a couple extras that we use for recess and PE. And the Irvington Police Department has a radio. And I would say, every day, I'm a morning person, every day, between 6:30 and, and 7:30, you hear the police department come on the radio, and they check the radios to make sure they have a connection with the schools, every single day, like clockwork. So, we have great communication. In the past, if you had a critical situation, you tried calling somebody on, on their cellphone, if you had their cellphone number available. You had to think about that time for dialing if there is an emergency. You would have to hope that whomever you were trying to reach, whether it was an administrator, the nurse, or a custodian, wasn't in a, a dead zone in the school building, where there are many's, where you won't get cell service. And then, if you, if you had a critical situation that maybe you want to handle confidentially, you would have to use a PA system or start using phones and calling around the building. It wasn't effective. This radio system has increased our responses, which has been fantastic. We've also improved the electronic entry systems. At Main Street School, there was no buzzer system. There was an open door in the past. Our response on going back to the situation in Newtown was that we, we altered the protocols in the building. Folks entered from the side of parking lot side of the building. We had our greeter sitting there to welcome people in and out, but it was very inefficient. We installed a buzzer that works with the main door. Now the buzzer, there's visibility in the office and also another at the greeter desk at the top of the stairs. We added additional buzzer for the security desk at Dow's Lane. System is not practical, though, to work with the campus right now. We continue to look at options here, but these options are much more complex and much more expensive. So, this does, security doesn't come cheap. The board approved a contract with the Summit Security Company, which is a state contract that provides security greeters for $107,000. We need to appoint, that's not all new money. We did have some greeters in the budget in the past. Security camera and equipment, you can see about $12,500. Two-way radios and telephones, and I could have probably expanded on it, that we added telephones to our security desks as well. We only had one telephone in the past. It's important to note that these communication costs are one-time costs. Of course, there's some maintenance associated with the radios and/or telephones along the way if they're damaged. But these were one-time costs, and the majority of this funding was areas that Ms. Miller claimed in last year's budget. Looking at supplies, the badges, the binders and things like that, and we had to purchase one additional desk. So, our investment this year in security, and again, not all new money, was $153,000. We also had a safety and security assessment. We contracted with CLPS, which is a local school security firm. Wonderful credentials, experience, led by former military, police officer, CIA agent, the principal of the consulting firm also teaches at the collegiate level, and I've seen him speak numerous times at state-sponsored school safety seminars. They provided a thorough assessment of all our buildings. They spent time in our buildings. They're going to continue to provide training. And an outgrowth of that assessment was looking at updated safety plans, something that hadn't been done in a number of years. We created an overall district-level plan, but most importantly, we have building plans, which we have had the opportunity to utilize already this year. So, we have building-specific plans. We have building-level safety teams, emergency response teams, and post-incident response teams. We have emergency drills that are scheduled on a regular basis. Our police and fire department are excellent. They're here for every single drill. There's a debrief process afterwards where they give us feedback and critique our actions to make sure that we're always improving our practice. We created grab-and-go bags for each school building, where if there is an emergency evacuation, that there are emergency supplies to support our needs. And our nurses had grab-and-go bags related to student medical needs, but we expanded upon that to meet, to new higher industry standards. Then we have a district-wide safety team that meets quarterly. You can see the representation there. There's a lot of conversation that goes on there when we think about not just emergency situations, but general health and safety in our school buildings. We recognize that this is something that we're not going to stop, that there's always going to be continued focus in the subject matter. We've made significant progress in the past nine months, and we're certainly proud of it. We continue to explore methods to enhance the safety and security through our schools. We strive to be proactive, but we're now better prepared to be reactive or to respond if we need to. The middle school and high school, we must continue to assess the open campus concept, and we'll look into that as we move along. But kind of enclosing the work of school safety, like our commitment to providing excellent education, will never end. But a brief update of where we are, a lot of progress on this front. A lot of people have ownership and responsibility here. Beverly has taken a lot of ownership here. Gary has been involved, all the principals, teachers. We're definitely in a different place now than we were, as I said, nine months ago. Proud of it.
Chris, great presentation and really amazing progress. To, to frame it in simple terms, if 10 is, you know, the absolute best we could do, you know, any expense, 1 is a mess and we're highly exposed, where do we fit on that spectrum, 1 to 10?
Give a different assessment from elementary schools to secondary schools. I'd say our elementary schools were a solid eight or nine. Feeling pretty comfortable with the progress that we've made. Our teachers are very responsive. They're well-prepared to handle a crisis. I think the layers that we put in place with the addition, with the security greeters who are working out wonderfully, not only they're good people, but they're responsive. They respond to our critique and our advice. Mr. McCormick's layers of supervising them and doing walkthroughs in the building have been effective. I feel pretty good at the elementary schools. You know, school safety is never a perfect world because a part of our environment is that we, a part of the learning environment is taking the kids outside, and there's always a question mark about what could happen. But I feel pretty good there. You know, there's a piece to me that almost feels uncomfortable going on record to talk about areas of exposure. But when we look at the high school, I referenced things before, the idea of it being an open campus, kids coming and going, allowing delivery vehicles is a concern, and the idea of how easily accessible our, our buildings are. We don't want to build a fortress. We don't want to build walls around the schools. But what's that next step, just to add another layer of security, to control student traffic, to know who our visitors are, to ensure that our visitors aren't just walking in any which way. You know, our security greeters, they're in the lobbies of, out here by the gym and the middle school, but there's other entrances that you could walk around and, and enter that our students utilize. So, we have to be mindful of how we can control those access points in a different manner, but still not restrict the environment. We still want our kids to feel like they're, they're an army.
To that, I know, I just comment about that, which is, I know, on one hand, it can never be safe enough, but on the other hand, I think, in each point of diminishing returns, or, or there's a cost. There's a cost to being too safe, as you said, a restrictive environment. And I also think we need to look at Irvington as a district and where we are. And, I, I mean, I always come back to, when I look at some of the horrific things that did happen in other, you know, districts, and it's so horrible, but it almost seems like at some point, and I've had, like, insurance people say this, like, if someone really wants to get in, like, they were saying it to me about my house, like, if someone really wants to get into your house, they're going to get into your house. Doesn't matter how many alarms you put on or locks or whatever. So, I just think it's, you know, it maybe wouldn't be so hard on yourself with the high school, because I think really it's, you know, you kind of have to weigh all the factors and come out with where you think fits best, given all of the factors. That's my comment on the high school. But I did have, I guess, along those lines, you know, you had a line in here about the emergency drills are scheduled on a regular basis. And I, I think at one point, they had like two drills in a week or something. And I, I also think there needs, there's an optimal number, and I think at some point, I'd rather the kids, you know, no matter how many, you could always do, you could always do one more, and no matter how many you do, you know, you might not be perfect. But I think, you know, at some point, I wonder that we're very cognizant of the fact that it's very disruptive to the school day, and when they're doing multiples in a week or in a month. I mean, I, I just want to be sure that you're kind of taking a back, a step back. And someone's response was, I don't know who even said this in chit-chat, they're like, well, there's probably a number they have to do per year, and they're squeezing them all in when the weather's good. And I'm like, oh, that would be, that wouldn't make a lot of sense in terms of, like, this preparedness and time away from the classroom. So, I just want to make sure that we're mindful of that.
Am I having some weird deja vu? Didn't, we talked about this at another public meeting, and, and I believe that, that the answer on-
That was addressed.
Yeah, that, yeah, it was addressed. And the answer was, was that, you know, the actual, especially at the lower grades in Dow's Lane, that the actual amount of time that the kids were, were moving in and out very quickly, and it wasn't that much of a disruption. I mean, it has the potential for it, but-
The only reason I brought it up again, two reasons, and one is because-
Okay, so it wasn't just deja vu for me. We actually did talk about it.
Twice in a week seems excessive to me. I, I got to tell you. I mean, no matter what we talked about, we talked about maybe one a month, and then we talked about maybe tailing down. If at the point, we felt like the kids were, you know, moving in and out quickly and everything was running smoothly, then maybe you could reduce the number to keep the numbers in class, but-
There's also different kinds.
Yeah, and, and your, your concerns are heard. And, and the concern here, I don't think is the, the necessarily, the, the, the number of drills. In this, it sounds like there, whether it was an anomaly, there was some poor planning. And then, and that's something that we can address administratively. I'm going to tell you, and then I think I said it before, that I, I believe that there, there's value in having multiple drills. There's a variety of scenarios in which you drill. And when you think of emergency preparedness, your fire drill is the basis for all that you do.
Right.
But then you, you have all the different variations. And I can tell you, and Reyna Bev and Elaine, and we will speak to it, first thing yesterday morning, I, what I sent out was to all the administrators, go look to such page, such and such in your emergency book and be prepared for high winds, the tornado watch that was present, and so on, because we have particular protocols to follow in those conditions. So, we need to be able to practice that. And so-
You can't practice everything.
So, there's, there's scenarios that we have to practice, whether it's once or whether it's twice. But we're mindful of the concerns that are present, and we're not going to, to, to drill constantly. We need to be prepared for a handful of important scenarios.
And I guess I, I just wanted to just raise the question that it's kind of organic, like, you're, you know, what you do is kind of based on how prepared you think you are, or are things that might come up. But it didn't seem like it should be set in stone so much because, like I said, like we talked about, if kids are, if kids are moving through quickly and it seems pretty seamless, then, you know, maybe you could do less and keep them in the class. And if it's something new, like the tornado, and you need to add it, I'm just assuming it's constantly kind of being looked at and evaluated.
And, and, yeah, absolutely. But every year, we have to be mindful, kids are in different classrooms that have different-
Grades and different-
We have new kids, we have new teachers.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying every year. I'm just saying within the course of the year.
And, and there's different scenarios, like that shelter-in-place before, we didn't have the radios before this year. But one of my daughters was out, out on the field two seconds. That gym teacher had them in, and then kids have their cellphones in high school. There were four kids in a classroom who were practicing their instrument. They knew shelter-in-place. They weren't allowed to move, but they were kind of freaked out that they were in a room. They didn't know what was going on. So, they told the kids that were in that class. They told the teacher. The teacher radioed to Dave, and they got rescued. But there's different scenarios.
By the way, I, I always end up in the right place at the wrong time, I guess. I was there. I was in the building when it happened, and I was worried too. And everybody was looking at me going, what's going on? I'm like, I have no idea.
So, it's not just fire drills. There's different kinds of drills.
I'm always there. I'm always there.
You're on the boat when it gets stuck.
The teachers are all like, what's going on? I'm like, I don't know. Should I go?
Very good.
You know, I'm, this is interesting. It's obviously a new thing for me, and there's a lot of details that, you know, it doesn't seem like we should have this, like, the vulnerabilities and stuff. We shouldn't, or what exactly is being done, we should have as a public discussion. I just want to reassure myself, maybe the process, how the process is working and evaluating where we are. It's primarily through this- where we are, it's primarily through this committee, is that correct?
We, you look at it a couple different ways. We, the consulting firm that performed the assessment, they're working with us throughout this year in providing ongoing training and evaluation.
Right, and that's CLPS.
CLPS. And then the Irvington Police and Fire Department are involved in every one of our drills. They do walkthroughs in our buildings, and they provide us continual feedback. They're an excellent partnership, constantly making recommendations in how we can enhance our security in our schools.
Is there any thought to reaching out, I mean, Irvington, Irvington has wonderful police and fire department, but they're, you know, is there any thought to reaching out with, to other law enforcement agencies with, you know, deeper expertise in research?
The CLPS, I think, exceeds the standard that is, that is in the industry, and as I said, we have, they, now, there's, their team involved that performed assessments in our buildings this spring, CIA, police, military.
I know, but that's also not school safety things, right?
I would say there are some of the preeminent experts in school safety.
Take a mountain, that campus.
I feel confident that the assessments that we've had perform have satisfied our needs.
Okay, but I think it's also maybe worth thinking about how to build in, you know, this is a great process, but how to build in sort of, somebody to stress that process and come in and ask, somebody outside that group, come in and ask, are they doing it right, are they thinking of things differently? I just want to be comfortable that we're not getting set in any way, that we're continually...
We're still learning, John.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm asking.
I think that's, no, we're not beyond saying...
And let me just, maybe one other, one concrete suggestion is, there are probably other people in our community with fairly deep expertise in security areas, and I'm wondering if we have any process to kind of...
We haven't, and in fact, some, one of the members of this firm is a Irvington resident here, so it's how we kind of came across it.
Why are you expressing...
Well, I'm just trying to ask, how do we...
Concern about CLPS.
No, it's a matter of how do we, I'm thinking to myself, how do we do our due diligence as board members on this process to make sure...
Why couldn't we have CLPS come into an executive board to present in more detail?
He's speaking of the system and checks the balances.
I don't have any secure, I don't have any, CLPS can come in and say whatever they want. I don't, I'm not qualified to evaluate.
You're wanting to check on CLPS.
You want to check some balances.
You know, this is a very serious thing. There are bad things that can happen in schools, and I want to make sure that we're being prudent.
But at the same time, we're having a conversation that we don't want to close down the campus.
No, I know, that's right. We know we're trying to balance things here. We are trying to balance things in a reasonable way, and, you know, that's, that's my only question.
It's certainly something for us to ponder.
It's part of, the same way a financial firm, when it's doing risk management, would have its own risk managers do all of its stuff, but then they'd say, are our risk managers doing a good job? Can we get in somebody, a consultant, whoever, to come in and look and see if the risk managers know what they're doing? Are they missing something? You know, and it's the same kind of idea that I'm after.
Have we ever talked to Johnsman? Have we ever talked to the NISBA to see how they recommend handling this? I mean, maybe they have someone that...
And I don't even define fault at all with what's being done, I'm just...
Yeah, no, no, but I'm saying it's a good...
Generally speaking, the resources that those organizations have, and we can speak to BOSIs, their health and safety coordinators are teachers, so then I'm focused with law enforcement expertise. I guess, I just want to kind of highlight where we are. We didn't have coordinated, updated emergency plans, a lot like our curriculum conversation that we're having, right? Now we have plans that are in place, we have security features, we have personnel, we have communication systems in place, we're practicing, we're drilling. We've had two critical emergencies on this campus within the last six months. One was a lockdown, and the other was the shelter-in-place drill, in response to realistic threats. And they worked based upon the work that we had been doing along the way. So we've made great progress that I'm proud of. And I'm, John, absolutely, I'm not going to sit here and say that what we have is perfect, but what I would say is, let's get up to speed on what we have, and then let's test it to see if there's reason to believe that it could be enhanced. We know there's opportunities to make our buildings more secure, but there's nothing wrong with someone looking and reviewing our protocols. You need to know that the state police receive copies of our emergency plans to review as well, so they have copies of all those plans from when they were completed back in the springtime.
One other thing that you mentioned, though, get back to one thing you mentioned. Should this conversation all be public?
Well, it already has.
That's specific.
Well, there's some, there's a piece of what we talked about that perhaps we shouldn't have talked about on a recorded public meeting.
Well...
Delete, just kidding.
Which is what? Well, sorry.
Yeah, I think with that, I think, listen, the cat's out of the bag.
We could delete if there's an issue.
No, but I just mean, I just mean, moving, just moving forward, I think, if, you know, maybe you should ask them. I mean, maybe you should ask the security people if there's areas that they don't want us to talk about publicly.
They talked about common knowledge.
You did, but, yeah, but still.
Right, you know, the schools, anybody who wants to gather information from the schools...
I think that's a good point.
Are we, are we generally, someone move on to, we'll combine this with the community comments, please.
Richard Cole, Irvington. Are the security greeters armed?
No.
No.
No, has there been, was there any, was there ever a discussion about that?
Yes, we did.
If I wanted to, do you have any idea when that was, if I wanted to go back and listen to it?
Excuse me?
Do you have any idea if I wanted to go back into the, watch the video?
Oh, to listen to? I don't know when.
I mean, you could ask Elaine when we last talked about security, and then you could probably...
I actually didn't understand.
Oh, he asked whether, there was a discussion about whether the security greeter should be armed, and I believe we did discuss that.
There was.
Yeah, there, I just don't remember exactly when it was.
I'm sure it was, it had to be.
I'm sure it was before my time.
Yeah.
So before.
Yeah. I personally, I think board members should be armed after nights like this. So I'm all, I'm all with you on that one.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's go on the record, that's...
That's a joke.
That's a joke, it's not serious.
I'm completely serious.
You actually have a policy that would not be allowed, unless you ask for permission from the security.
Really? Okay. That being said, somebody will argue with me. Hey, the First Amendment works both ways, right? Right? Let's pose this...
That's the right one, you said.
Any other comments from the community, please?
Mike Lohanna, South Buckhead. I really liked the presentation about what's been done with security, especially some of the comments about the process and people taking ownership, and I just want to link that to the previous conversation about goals, that I would love to hear, maybe, this may be happening, but as a parent or as a school board member, people who are taking ownership or committees for these different, you know, whether we're talking about technology or fields or whatever. I know when it comes to curriculum, we can look to Raina Corr, I've heard a lot of great comments about the new guidance department chair, and I think, as we have these other discussions, if we link it to people who are going to be the leaders on these issues, that's, in addition to dates, another way to make sure that we're making progress on these issues.
Great, great, great suggestion. Anyone else?
Robin, I'm David Faber from Irvington. You brought up something that I'm very passionate about, which is really focusing in on the instructional end of, when you were having the curriculum discussion and thinking about the actual pedagogy. So I urge the board and the district to really, really take a deep look at the difference between curriculum and standards, the actual difference, and understand the shifts that are present there, and really, you know, my son's in second grade, and he's doing a really good job, and a lot of his classmates are crying nightly because the teachers are, are learning this as they're going, and it's a total growing pain, and I think it's really important that there's a fierce attention to the pedagogical shifts that are required of teachers, and the time that it takes. And I know you had talked about the time in previous sessions, but I urge the board to really consider that in thinking about giving the teachers that time, because they're working really, really hard.
Thank you.
Maybe this just partly goes to, I just wanted to be well-informed about it, so we can give that attention.
Okay, does the board have anything that they would want to say?
I have a quick question. Well, questions quick. What, do we have sort of, when we had the tornado watch and after-school activity, in that case, after-school activities were all canceled, is there a formal set of procedures or standards we have for generally closing schools or canceling activities, or is it entirely a judgment call? And if it is, just can you kind of explain a little bit what goes into that judgment? I know it's, I'm sure it's a hard judgment.
Those of you that know my office, it has that little back door. I just go outside, lick my finger.
You must be a much better meteorologist.
No, there's, so there's, when we look at sporting events, there's specific protocols that are identified by Section 1 that we follow.
It's Section 1.
Section 1.
Twice in my business.
Just paid for tonight, John.
So there's, there's protocols that we follow in the particular guidance, like, we look at weather conditions, we follow weather reports for athletics that are associated with AccuWeather, so everyone in the section is using the same standard. When we look to weather-related decisions, and when you look at something like yesterday, you err on the side of caution, but when we're speaking about snow days and inclement weather, the more traditional weather impacts, we have feet on the ground, so we're talking to the police, we're talking to DPW. We also utilize a meteorology service that gives us spot-on forecasts for Irvington, and they tell you hourly what should be, should not be happening, and we call those folks 24 hours a day as needed, and they, they guide you pretty well. One of the complications that I'm trying to get used to is just being directly on the river and the impact that the river has on weather, and it's a little crazy sometimes, as you know, and you just go over the bridge and it changes, you go a couple miles further north and it changes, or you go down south, it changes. But generally speaking, it is, I got to be honest, it's a judgment call, and I got to tell you, it's quite a burden. So you don't, you don't want to be in my house when there's a snowstorm coming, because I'll be camped out with every weather service on and my cellphone going, and all of the superintendents in the area, and I've only been here for a year, teased me, and the first regional superintendent's meeting last month, when I walked in, they said, oh, Chris is thinking about snow already. Because I got to tell you, 4 o'clock in the morning, I expect to be on the phone with other, with everybody to have a decision made. I take it to heart, I got to think about the safety of every one of your kids, I got to think about how that impacts your lives if you're racing, racing to get your kids off to school, and I have to think about approximately 300 staff members that are traveling from all over the region to get here.
And the timing.
It's a challenging situation.
I mean, the one thing that, I mean, the most complaints I think I've ever heard was one of those days when the storm came, right, when the buses would have come, and then by 10 o'clock, it was gone, and everyone's like, why did we not have school? But, you know, I think Chris has to factor in the timing of the buses, and can they get out, and can they get there, and will the roads be safe? So there's other...
I forgot what we were talking about.
I know we live in a difficult, I grew up in a very snowy, very hot place, but we live in a very difficult district, just given the...
I have to tell you, one of my, one of my first official times in Irvington, it was an interview, and it was a snowstorm, and I stopped on Broadway and watched a car slide all the way down one of the hills, across the road, smacked into the curb, spun around up on the sidewalk. So the hills definitely play a role.
Should have turned around right then, went back.
I already met you, so...